Excuse me, do we, do we have Paul here?
Um. I don't know. Yes, he's in the, he's in the room.
Thank you. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, May 5th, 2021 at 7:30 PM via the Zoom platform. Due to the COVID-19 virus and mandatory quarantines imposed under executive orders by Governor Philip D. Murphy, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public for the purpose of board meeting. The note, this, the notice was given containing information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio and/or video means. The public had the same, will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. This notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall Bulletin Board, and Milburn Town Hall front door, and is also forwarded to the Item and the Star Ledger, which publications are the official newspapers for the township of Milburn. Roll call.
Daniel Bear?
Here.
Yes, Son Halbert?
Here.
Jorge Mastro Pietro?
Yeah.
Mark Matzel?
Here.
Maggie Megan?
Here.
Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
Sanjeev Anayak?
Here.
David Morrow?
Here.
Mimi Vijay?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Miriam Salerno?
Here.
Chairwoman Betsel?
Here. Thank you. Our first item tonight is review and approval of the minutes from February 17th, which were distributed on April 29th. Um, I don't know, I mean, I didn't see another version come out. Did you receive any comments that we should be aware of?
I just received one minor correction on line 116. It should be, it should say the existing rain gardens were all, but that was all. And Ed, these were also, this was the meeting where we had the closed session. I did send them to you. I don't know, can we approve them both together? Can, I, I didn't get a chance to review the closed session one, so I'm going to ask that they be deferred to our next meeting, if we could, please.
Not a problem.
Okay, great. So then we're just focusing on, just for the record, the meeting minutes from the public meeting that was held on February 17th.
Yes.
With that correction on rain gardens, does anybody else have any corrections or concerns? Okay, anybody like make a motion to approve the minutes?
I will.
Thank you. Anybody second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then Dan Bear, I know you had recused from that meeting, so I don't know if no, I thought it said that in the minutes.
Recuse himself from.
From Advanced Development Accelerator, yeah, he had recused.
Well, that was accelerated, and then we had the closed session. Okay, then I abstained from the vote. Thank you.
No problem. Okay, great. But that said, um, the meeting minutes from February 17th. Thank you, approved. Um, so as I just stated, and I'll state it again now that the meeting has begun, we are reversing the order of the, the agenda items for this application. So we're going to begin with application 2000785 Woodland Chatham, um, which we had carried from last Wednesday. And so with us now is joining applicants counsel, Mr. Orth. Good evening.
Oh.
And Ms. Ms. All, I'm going to recuse. Have a lovely evening, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Okay, good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. My name is Derek Orth, a law firm of Inglisino Webster, Wichita and Taylor, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, 85 Woodland Road LLC. I'm covering for my partner, John Inglisino, this evening. I think I last saw the board on this application at some point in October or November of last year. So here I am tonight, once more into the breach. Thankfully, I believe, quote of famous English author, I believe my job here tonight is very brief. Madam Chair, we did submit a letter to Ms. David or Ms. Abbott, which we requested to be circulated to the members of the board. In effect, that letter states, and I'll just summarize it briefly, is that we have presented our affirmative case. All of our witnesses have been heard. They've been subject to cross-examination by the board and the public. Objectors have also had an opportunity to present their case. Public comment has been made, and that portion of the meeting has been closed. And I'll get to the critical part of our letter. The applicant has authorized us to withdraw the rooftop deck from the subject application. This is the deck that was located, it was approximately 2,700 square feet. It was proposed to be located on the roof of the Phase 2 building. We would stipulate as a condition of approval, that revised plans without the rooftop deck be submitted as part of resolution compliance. So number one, Madam Chair, I'd just like to confirm that everyone on the board received our letter and that it is entered into the record.
Yes, thank you. We can confirm that we have received it. Does it need to be entered as an exhibit, or it's just entered as a letter? Ed, I don't know.
Well, why don't we, it is a significant aspect of the application. Why don't we mark it as an exhibit?
Okay.
We're, we're at A47, if I'm correct. So this would be A48. And that's the, the letter that I believe is dated today.
That's correct.
May 5th, 2021, containing the information that Mr. Orth has put on the record.
Thank you for that, Mr. Boozak. That really concludes my presentation, Madam Chair and members of the board. We withdrawn the rooftop deck from consideration, and we would stipulate to submit revised plans, removing the deck as part of resolution compliance, should the board approve this application. I have nothing further, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Orth. Then we, we may have some questions with regard to the, the content in the letter. Are you able to answer those questions?
I would be happy to hear the questions and then.
Sounds good. You, I see your fingers up. Your hand is raised.
I have a question. I've read the letter, and it was interesting to me that the letter referred to the rooftop deck singular. My recollection is, and I stand corrected if I'm wrong, that there were two rooftop decks.
They're all, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
And I'm curious as to whether the applicant has withdrawn consideration of one or both?
Just one, Mr. Steinberg. There is a, a rooftop deck on Phase 2 of the project. We've divided this project into two phases. Phase 2, and if I'm looking at my mind's eye of the plans, is, is to the left. And we had a approximately 2,700 square foot on the roof of the Phase 2 building, which also was proposed for a deck. We are not proposing to remove, modify, or otherwise alter any balconies on any other parts of the building.
Okay, thank you. And Joe, did that clarify your question?
That clarifies my question, but it doesn't clarify the issue. But go ahead. Is there something that you want to say? I can wait.
No, go ahead. Please finish.
It seems to me that there were a number of issues that were raised with respect to the decks, and I have an S on that word, D-E-C-K-S. One of them was noise. One of them was the inability of the police department to get to the, uh, deck or decks if there were, if there was a noise, a complaint. And another was that there was a decision made by the applicant that, uh, doorways to the, to the decks would be closed automatically at, I believe it was 10 PM. Now, I think you were, you were probably three or four years old when you figured out that to solve the problem of a doorway closing automatically, that's all you had to do was take your shoe and put it in the doorway, which would prevent the door from closing. I'm concerned that the concerns that we heard from the neighbors included those items that I've just stated, primarily noise that might emanate, emanate from the decks. And so I was hoping that the applicant would, uh, in, in, inform their attorneys that the attorneys could withdraw both of the decks from the application. So that's my issue.
Okay, Mr. Orth, could you confirm if the decks on the interior courtyard, the, the roof deck, are those private to each residence? Like, are they individual balconies, or is that a public deck?
We, we, we consider them to be balconies. We do not classify them as a rooftop deck as we did the rooftop deck on Phase 2 of the building, which has been withdrawn.
Okay, Joe, does that clarify your understanding of what those are?
No. It does not clarify. How big is the other deck, the second deck, the one that is not being withdrawn?
Sir, I, I don't know that I, I, I don't classify it as, as a deck. There is amenity space, which is balcony space, which is, which is connected to units. The differentiation there is that the rooftop deck on Phase 2 was on the roof. There was no unit that could walk out directly onto it. It was accessible to the entirety of the building. That has been withdrawn. Everything else has not.
There's a common area in the middle. I think maybe that's what Joe is referring to. That has also amenities. So it's an open area. It's not individual. Maybe that's.
Courtyard you're speaking about.
The courtyard green space?
Yes.
Yes, we, we are.
Probably that is what Joe is referring to. Again, I'm not putting any words out, but that's what my perception or my, my take on that is.
Understood. We are not withdrawing that, sir.
Okay, so Mr. Orth, I apologize, but just to clarify, or in my mindset, there's the uppermost roof deck, which it was facing into the arboretum, which is what you have taken off the drawing board as of, as of the letter from today.
And just to say, that was the one that had the fire pits and the grills, correct?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Okay.
I think there's a fire pit also.
Nope, but Sanjeev, sorry, we, sorry, Sanjeev, we have to go one at a time, just for the court stenographer. I apologize. Let, let me just finish, and then I can, I'll, I'll let you speak next. And then, so there was that, right, that roof most stack with fire pits that we had spoken about. It is now not being asked on the applications, no longer included. There is another roof level amenity deck, which I believe was even with the gym or workout room, if I am correct in my memory. And that is what Mr. Orth is saying is private balcony level only. But those are only accessible from the individual units. I just, that's what we're looking to confirm. And then at a lower elevation, there's the public courtyard and a quiet courtyard, I believe it was called, which was just private for a resident of the building. Can you confirm that my understanding there is correct or incorrect?
Madam Chair, I believe you've described it correctly.
Okay, thank you. Sanjeev, did you want to clarify anything else?
I thought there is an internal area open to all the apartment tenants. They can come in there. It's not private, and they have fire pit as well. That's what my understanding was.
Well.
That is not a rooftop deck. It's, it's below the roof inside.
Correct. It's not a rooftop deck. And I just, you know, we, we, I, we would have to go back and look at transcripts. So, so for purposes of tonight, the board has heard, you know, a lot of testimony from our architectural professionals and our engineering professionals. And there was a specific rooftop deck on Phase 2, which was proposed to be approximately 2,700 square feet. We have removed that from the application. As to everything else that was previously presented, that remains. We are not altering or removing any of those amenities or expenses from this application.
Madam Chair, if I may, I think the area, and you did characterize it, is referred to on the site plan as an upper level roof courtyard.
Thank you. And David, while you have that available, and I was just looking to pull it up from the site too, and Mr. Orth, I don't know if you have the image available, does it, are those on the drawings looking, are they privately accessible from units? Or is it unclear on your plan?
From the site plan, it is, it is somewhat unclear, um, if they are private, but, but my understanding of reading a, a site plan as this is, it is an open area which has access from an upper level space that is above the proposed lobby.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm looking at them, site plans as well from the site, but it, it is hard to determine that from what I'm looking at. Okay, um, so as stands to, if I heard you correctly, Mr. Orth, you are taking off the upper, uppermost roof deck, and Jorge has a question, and, and leaving everything else as was per application and per what we have received today.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Jorge?
No, can I share the screen? Because it was clear, and it's clear for me, that that roof deck, the upper courtyard roof deck, whatever they call, at level 227.34 feet, it was public, public, not for everybody, public for the residents of the complex. So if you want, I can share the screen. Of course, these plans, these diagrams, all these presentations are very confused. But for what I see here, and I remember, they used to have, they said that they have fire pits, barbecue, and trees. So if you want, I can, I have here the diagrams and submitted by them, and it shows that it kind of a common space for all the units.
I'm messaging with my professionals right now.
Okay, to confirm, that's fine. And you, obviously, Jorge, we don't know what, what exhibit number this is, but this is.
So this is the plans?
Can you, can you scroll to the right lower corner, just so that, so for Ed's sake, he will be able to know what reference, what the, their drawing number or their, this is, so we can cross-reference it.
Well, no, that doesn't respond, sorry.
No, okay.
So I, I, for the courtyard, that level 227, that is available to the units which face it.
Okay, so they are only available to the units that are adjacent or facing it?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
So, sorry, maybe it wasn't the wrong elevation. I'm talking about this courtyard. And I think this line here is the one that you are saying that are here. I don't know if you see the hand of my computer there. So these are private, and this is a courtyard. And they call this, that it was always very confusing, roof deck, because this is about the garage level. So it's a roof, because it's about the garage. But again, this is the one that they always talk about, that common space for all residents.
That's you, you, yes, I believe, I believe that's correct. Yes, that it is, it is on the roof of the garage. It is not on the roof of Phase 2, which is, yes, we're on the same page.
So I'm talking about this one here. That was a common space for the building.
Surrounded by the building, correct. We are not proposing any alterations to that. It's simply the uppermost rooftop deck on Phase 2, approximately 2,700 square feet. We are removing that.
I got it.
Thank, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay. Any other questions regarding the removal of the upper roof deck that would face to, the uppermost roof deck would, would have faced to the arboretum and surrounding neighborhood? Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. Orth, for presenting that. And.
And now. I, I appreciate the board's questions, and, you know, we submit the matter to the board or deliberation and, and to vote. Thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you. So, members of the board, we're going to discuss, and Mr. Matzel, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, my understanding was, I asked the question specifically before we adjourned at the last meeting, that we'd have an opportunity to question them. A number of board members did not have their questions answered. I wanted to follow up on a couple of mine, especially related to the public testimony that was more than just the roof deck. So I appreciate Mr. Orth's presence, because I need to ask a question of somebody representing the developer. Thank you.
A pleasure to be here. Thank you. Was there, I'm sorry, were you going to ask a question?
Yeah, I had, you know, based on what we heard from several community members, there were issues such as the party deck, and we're pleased that you resolved some of them. A number of, a number of people also brought up the, especially in light of Mr. Tobia's presentation related to the customary and incidental examples of, of roof decks. And,
Mark, I apologize. There's a lot of static where you are, and it's very hard to hear you. Just, okay. We need to be able to hear you, so.
Yeah, so do I need to repeat it, or did you hear some of it?
Just the, like, the last sentence, you were getting fuzzy.
Okay, but when Mr. Tobia gave the presentation on buildings that had roof decks that, you know, were tied to his argument that we heard related to customary and incidental, he listed about six or seven sites, including the Beehive site, 45 Market Street, and Morristown, Modera, on Clinton Street, Metropolitan Market Street, I believe that was in Montclair, although I'm not sure. In Montclair also, the best, you know, Bloomfield Avenue and the Montclarian. They all had roof decks. And the point that I raised, at least to Mr. Inglisino, was that every one of those were either LEED Silver or LEED Gold certified. Beehive, experts referenced on multiple occasions, also agreed to LEED certification. It's very important to many people in the community. And, and consistent with the spirit of the Milburn Master Plan, I, I again would like to propose that you commit to a LEED certification. I was told on two occasions by Mr. Minno and Mr. Inglisino, that the developer felt that it was too expensive, including Mr. Minno, who basically firm has built many, 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 many LEED buildings. And the question that I asked, that I never received an answer to, was you, are you aware of the federal and state tax credits that you get for LEED? And are you aware of the return on investment that you get in very quick order from a LEED designation? It basically benefits the developer. It benefits the tenants with, with significant savings on utilities. The utility demands crush the carbon footprint, as reduced water usage is reduced. And I have exact numbers, as I'm sure Mr. Minno is aware, because he's built many of them. So that's my question. Are you aware? And I'm, I'm very unhappy that you're unwilling to, to commit to a LEED certification, especially in light of all the times that your firm referenced the Beehive site.
So I, I, I understand the question. Yeah, I am sure that our professionals, architects and the engineer are, are aware of the things that you referenced. But what I can confirm, although it will, it will not be to your pleasure, is that the applicant is not willing to commit to a LEED certification. There are many aspects of the project which are, you know, of the things that LEED requires, but we are not willing to commit to a LEED certification.
Okay. And my second question related to, I, I think one of our board members referenced it at the last meeting, was that Mr. Lo Fanzama was going to come back and, and basically answer further questions about stormwater management, which also came up with many, from many people in the community. And in light of the state's new, you know, stormwater regs that, that tie specifically to green infrastructure, you know, I, I was, one question that had been asked is, can you basically put a rain garden or, you know, bioswell on the site to retain more water on-site and not dump it into the creek?
Sir, I, I hate to disappoint you twice, but we are not bringing Mr. Lonsafama back for any additional testimony.
Yes, that Mr. Inglisino said that he would come back.
He, he is not, the applicant is not proposing to bring back any further witnesses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Other, this is, and we, we're now open for board discussion, so we can talk amongst ourselves, or we can ask questions if there are any clarifications from Mr. Orth. Go ahead, Jorge.
So, this is not a question anymore.
Okay.
This is now is like my statement about this application, and I don't know if this is the time to do it.
Go ahead.
I want to talk also, as everybody knows, I'm part of the Environmental Commission, and I'm the liaison between the Environmental Commission and the planning board. And I would like to remind that as per the master plan, the focus of the Environmental Commission is threefold. One is to protect and manage critical environmental resources in the township. Two is to improve the quality of life of residents, and I'm going to repeat that, to improve the quality of life of residents. And three is to minimize the environmental impact of the township on the environment. So this is the last objective that I wish the applicant for this project could be, could more proactively address. Although the location of this building will allow more of our future residents to live within close proximity of the public transit, and thereby reduce the dependence of cars, which is a good thing, I feel that the developer could and should, should do more. I have read the EIS admitted by the developer back in April or something like that, and in it states that the project will have some immediate and long-term impacts to the site, which is of course, and every development will have an impact. This impact, they said, will be limited in duration and intensity. But of course, any, we, we know that development will have an impact. But I want to read something that our ordinance says. In the I don't, DRZ509 from our ordinance, which is the environmental impact statement, it says, "The purpose of the EIS is to compile information that will enable the developer to minimize adverse effects on the environment." A statement should be required for all measures of division, blah, 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 should provide enough information needed to evaluate the effect of a proposed development upon the environment. And it should include data be distributed, reviewed, and passed in accordance with the design and performance standards of this ordinance." Then it keeps going, and the I don't 509.1, it says, "A description of the development specifying what is to be done during construction and operation, as well as how it's going to be done, and alternate plans to achieve the objective." So the applicant said several times that this will be part of the development agreement. But this should have been part of the EIS submitted to the planning board. During all these meetings, many times, many members of the planning board and also members of the community asked about the operation during construction and also after construction. And the answer was always, we will review during the construction documents, that was Mr. Minno said, or this will be specified in the developer agreement, as Mr. Inglisino many times said. So if this information will be provided after, why are we going through this process of nine meetings of site plan approval, or a site plan review? I have to say that in this situation, the EIS is incomplete, because doesn't mention that. Also, it's important to mention that part of the site, and this was a discussion that I was, I wanted to have before, and I never have an answer, is located along and within the riparian zone. is located along and within the riparian zone. I know the parking lot is within that area, but the parking lot is an open space. The EIS submitted by Cassie and Keller on page two states that portion of the existing parking area and workways lie within 50 feet of the top of the bank of the unnamed tributary, which means the building, this is part of the riparian zone. But our zoning code, the Article 706.5, clearly specifies that any disturbed condition at the time of the adoption of this ordinance may be restored to a natural condition. On the end of the same paragraph say, "No new construction, development should take place in the riparian zone." Then the ordinance say there are a few exceptions, but if you read all those exceptions, all those exceptions are open spaces, no buildings. But let's go back to my first point, when I said that there is no description of the development specifying what is going to be done during construction and operation. We don't know how the applicant is going to be building an edifice along the riparian zone, where there is in some locations, no more than one foot and a half setback from the property line. I know, and I know what the council is going to say, this was approved by the ordinance, I know that. But how will, could the wall along the, the north side of the, the property, which is aligned with the arboritum, is going to be built without disturbance of the riparian zone? During construction, they will need construction fences, scaffolds, and that cannot happen with 18 inches setback without disturbing that riparian zone. Now, the NJAC 713-11.2 requires the applicant to demonstrate that disturbance to the riparian zone is necessary and where is deemed necessary that the disturbance is minimized. This information should be, should have been part of this site plan review and we don't have that information neither. So on the same page of the EIS writing by Cassie and Keller, again, it states that otherwise, the area between the tributary and the parking areas, and they said between brackets, "not part of the applicant's property," is lightly wooded with lawn areas rav and blah, blah, blah. So when I read, and I, I have to clarify that English is my second language, but I understand that lightly means not so many trees. And I don't know if whoever prepared this EIS, if they went to visit the site. I have pictures, I can show the picture that this is not lightly wooded. There are a lot of trees there. So either they didn't visit the site or intentionally is using the word lightly to mislead the information to the planning board and to the community. Let's keep going with our ordinance. The point 509.2 says, "An inventory of the following onsite environmental conditions and an assessment of the probable impact of the development upon them, noise, wildlife habitat, aesthetics, including the visual relationship to existing and training building history and archaeology." So first, noise. There was no study, no report, nothing about noise level during construction and after construction. Many members of this planning board and also from the public asked about that and there was never an answer. Your EIS, the one provided by the applicant, says, "The post-development noise could be similar to that of the surrounding neighborhood of single-family homes, apartment buildings and several commercial entities." That's your EIS. Well, okay, we don't have a roof deck on top of the building now anymore, but we have still, for example, in the roof, 62 condensers that during summertime, especially at night, are going to produce noise. But we don't have a report. I don't, I don't know how much noise, because I'm not an expert. But we ask for all those reports. I appreciate that the roof deck is not anymore there, even though I'm one of those people who always believed that I prefer to have a roof with people and not a roof with condensers. But in this case, was both situation. There were people and condenser. But also in this case, the roof deck is in the middle of a residential neighborhood. But I'm not going to keep talking about the roof deck because I appreciate that that's not anymore there. I would appreciate if instead to have a roof deck, we could have a beautiful, hidden roof. Let's go to the other point that I mentioned before, which is the wildlife. I asked in one of the meetings about any study, I asked the engineer, about any study about how this building is going to affect the bird. There was no answer. Later, two minutes later or whatever was that, there was a member of the community asking almost a similar question and there was no answer either. I'm very concerned about the wildlife, not just birds, butterflies, more, many other wildlife in this area. I think this building is going to be a problem for the bird sanctuary. The height of the building, which is already part of the ordinance, so I have to accept that because it was approved by the ordinance, but also the reflection of the window facing the arboritum. The light either from outside of the building and from inside of the apartments. But again, I don't have evidence for that because there was no, I don't have evidence for what I'm saying, but also there is no evidence of the contrary. We know that this is a bird sanctuary, but there are solutions about this issue. And we asked about, but that's not part of the EIS. For example, they could propose, and I never heard that, that they could use turtle-friendly lights. Turtle, it's always hard for me to pronounce that word. I don't know why. Turtle. T U T, T U R T L E, turtle. These lights are being used to avoid, to attract turtles from the sea when they are hatching. But also, these lights don't contribute to light pollution and they are approved by the International Dark Sky Association. Windows, many people ask about the windows and I never heard the solution about windows. And there will be a very easy solution, but the solution has to come from you guys, not from me. Why not to use anti-bird collision glass? The, the solution was there, but they never brought the solution to us. So this is what our EIS is requesting, because this is part of the mitigation of the impact of this building next, in this case, next to the arboritum. Again, I'm not expert on any of that. Let's talk about aesthetics. Again, I'm not testifying here and an expert, but I cannot forget that an architect would say the years of experience. And I have a master degree in urban design. I worked in South America, in Europe and here in US. So let's start from the character of this neighborhood. But first, before to say anything about that, I want to clarify something that Mr. Inglisino said last time, or many times. He always said that the, the design of this building or whatever is, the design of the building or the sketches were part of the settlement agreement. That's true. I, I remember, I saw when the planning board saw this application, I saw those sketches, but those were sketches. Everybody should know that there is a design process and the settlement agreement includes a conceptual design. That wasn't a final design. As an architect, I have to understand that when somebody submit that, that's a conceptual design. It's not even schematic design. It's a very preliminary intention of the design, not a final design. So, and also, I never saw during the, the settlement agreement, any view from the arboritum to this building. We didn't know how this building was going to look, viewed this from the arboritum. So in the drawings or in the sketch, I don't want to say drawings, because that's, those were not drawings, are sketches of the elevation of the facade. There was, for example, no material callout. So when I saw a more developed elevation, not developed as I was expecting, but some more work on those elevation, for example, I see a collage of different materials. Now I want to know which other building around this site has a facade with so many different materials, for example. So I asked in one of the meetings, the architect, how this building is related to the neighbors' buildings? In relationship of massing, material, setting, roof floor, relationship between boys and wolves, et cetera. I was asking a question using the same language that architects use. And his answer from the architect, Mr. Minno, said, "This building relates to the community because it brings affordable housing." And I said, wow, I wasn't expecting that answer from an architect. That's the answer from a developer. But never mind, we know that we have a problem with affordable housing and we are working to fix that. But 12 units, it doesn't solve the problem. 12 units is only 12 units. If you come here to us and say, "We have 100% of the buildings, you are going to be affordable housing," that will be a different discussion, but you are bringing 12 units. So my question about this, and it wasn't my question, is the question of, from the environmental impact statement about aesthetics, again, was an answer. Now, some other parts of the ordinance says, and also, sorry, I want to say also something else about that. The sketches that were submitted during this settlement agreement, we couldn't accept it just as a sketchy, because I want to remember, to remind the applicant that on those sketches, for example, there was mistakes. For example, there was the mistake about this two, the exterior stair encroaching on the public right of way. So what it means that? That because those were part of the settlement agreement, we have to approve that? Because you are taking part of our municipal property, which is the sidewalk. You fix it, of course, because you have to fix it. That doesn't mean that we have to approve exactly everything that was part of that settlement agreement. Now, let's keep going. Our ordinance also says in 509.5, "A description of a step to be taken to avoid or minimize adverse environmental impacts during construction operation," including that, blah, blah, blah. So again, that's already said, there was nothing about this and we asked many times about that. So now, let's talk about something else, also from the zoning ordinance. The Article 531.3, it says, "Development applications. A, to encourage development projects to incorporate sustainable building and design measures. The township of Billboard has established a sustainability checklist as part of the maintenance and mission checklist." B, it keeps going, "B, the sustainability checklist for incorporating proposed green energy and water conservation measures, including one, the name of the any LEED professional working on the project, two, a list of suppliers, three, a list of green and recycled building materials, four, waste plan management, seven, details of roof materials, which we also asked about that, and they have different options like construction of rooftop gardens to reduce solar gain in summer and insulate in winter." So all of this is part of our ordinance. I'm not making up this. This is part of our ordinance. And, and for the, I don't see on the same paragraph says, "For each of these icons listed on this checklist, applicants must indicate the extent to which they are incorporating certain measure in the project or alternatively indicate the reason why the measure is not being incorporated in the project." Well, this is like, doesn't exist in your presentation. We asked and there was no answer. Many members of this planning board, members of the community, asked about this. First to the city engineer, then to the architect, and there was never an answer about this. The only answer was, "It is very expensive to have a LEED certification on the building." How much does it cost? I think the applicant said between 200,000 to 300,000. So, okay, let's say 300,000. What is the percentage on the whole construction cost? I'm talking about construction cost, not project cost.
Okay, Jorge, I just want to, I know we did talk a lot, but I don't want to.
I know, I'd like to finish. I'm sorry, but I'd like to finish because we were talking about so many things about this and we don't, we don't have an answer. So I want to say that the cost of this application for a LEED certification will cost no more than a 3% for the whole building. Last, so everybody will be happy that I'm finishing here. They asked in the schedule, building plan and elevations, architectural, which material dimensions and signage. We never saw floor building plans. What we were submitting here are diagrams plans, but not floor plans. We don't even know in, on those plans, if they can fit the mixed unit, the, the, the different type unit that they have in this building. For example, they are talking about affordable housing, but in this case, the affordable housing are in the corner and if you see those plans, the length of the exterior wall doesn't, will not fit a two-bedroom apartment, two-bedroom with windows outdoor plus a living room. So based on everything that I exposed, I'm finishing here, "I need to express my concern and disappointment and this development proposed at this site. Besides the obvious insensitivity to the environmental and cultural issues to this neighborhood, there is a lack of respect towards the arboritum, which is the bird sanctuary and breeding territory for moth, butterfly, et cetera. Here lies an incredible, an unique opportunity to build a space that uses less fuel, power, energy, that reduces its impact on stormwater, that truly reflects the priority value of an increasing number of residents in our community, many of whom, like me, are deeply concerned about the climate crisis and the role in mitigating it." I will say at the borderline, is this building and development should be about promoting quality of light that does less harm to our neighbors, our local community, but also to our planet. I would like to ask the developers to be a good neighbor. I would like to invite them to work with us, embrace the community. So I think we should evaluate the applicant's inability to mitigate certain environmental impact is sufficient to approve this application. I would like to recommend to go back to the drawing board, bring a building same size, same amount of units, with a design that fits the character of our unique neighborhood, that embrace really the history, the, our community and embrace the fight for the climate change. I would like to propose, let's work together with respect. Let's work together to imagine and build a sustainable and inclusive future, but also that is beautiful to, for our eyes, minds and ourselves. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Jorge. I appreciate that. I know some of the questions, especially your initial ones regarding the riparian zone, I know you had asked of our engineer. And Martha, you're here, I don't know if you're willing to just sort of restate your position on that just for the board's clarification, but I, you know, Jorge, you raised a lot of valid points. I'm not trying to diminish, I just would like to allow her a response to your, your good question.
Yes, I did receive an email from Jorge and I tried to explain to him the, the position that the town would take in a situation like this, but also the rules that we have in our ordinances and the way the DEP would look at this property. And as a fully developed property, it is considered a major development, of course, and what, but the key thing is that they are reducing the impervious coverage of the property. So they're lessening, they're not increasing an adverse impact, they're lessening the impact. We did ask them and they did agree to provide drywells. So in the previous condition, every bit of runoff from that site went straight into a pipe and straight into the stream. In this case, we, I asked Cassie and Keller to design a drywall system and all of this stormwater that's collected from the buildings and there is no surface runoff. There's no parking, no surface parking, no exposed surface parking. So the runoff that is collected is, every bit of runoff that comes off of the buildings is directed into a drywall system. And then from there, it will overflow, will only have overflow from the dry well system going into the adjacent stream. And as I explained, the adjacent stream in, in our email exchange, the adjacent stream is a channelized stream, it's an armored stream, it's got manmade walls. Not a naturally occurring stream or possibly not naturally occurring in that location. It is channelized and goes directly into, uh, what we call, it's in our diversion works. Goes directly into a five foot diameter pipe that goes straight down underneath all of Glenwood. It does ultimately contribute into the railway river, it's tributary to the railway river. So we do have to be careful what we're putting into that stream, obviously, but I felt that they had, you know, complied with the mitigation efforts that we had requested and you know, I, I felt that it was okay. I understand what you're saying, Jorge, I, um, but this was, this was not just a vacant meadow previously that was home to butterflies and, and many tree. It wasn't a forested site, they didn't have to cut down any trees. They took a previously developed site and they've redevelopment, or they're proposing redevelopment on this property.
Can I, can I ask a, send a question to Martha actually, but the ordinance is clear about open space and new buildings. So what we have today is an open space, correct? That, that's my point. It's an open, the parking is open, so the part that is.
I think we, I think maybe it would help if, if either Martha or somebody can define, clarify the definition of an open space. Cause I think you're interpreting a parking lot as an open space, but I'm not sure that that is the definition.
Environmentally, I don't believe that a parking lot is considered open space. It's developed, it's got asphalt over it. It's, it's not, open space is an open area where vegetation is allowed to grow. There's environmental habitat, there's flora and fauna. There's not very much flora and fauna on an old gas station. I, I'm, just don't see that area as being classified or categorized as open space. And I don't believe that an environmental commission would see that as open space either. That's.
Okay, I, I see Mark Masl has a question, maybe it's also from Martha or not, so Mark, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know, I thoroughly appreciate what Jorge said, and these are questions that I, as well as Jorge and a couple of members to the community asked related to stormwater management. And in light of, of D E P's new, you know, stormwater reg or enhanced stormwater reg, where they're encouraging green infrastructure. And this is a question I specifically asked Mr. Lo Fanzama. It, it's really easy to capture additional water, you know, through permeable pavers. I mean, green infrastructure in itself could capture stormwater on site. And it's not a whole heck of a lot. I mean, he made an improvement by sticking a little detention basin there. But he could do more and it's not, green infrastructure is one of the most cost effective modalities of, of, of engineering now. And it's done relatively inexpensively, it was really simple. He said, I believe he said at one point he'd look into it and we asked for a follow up. We were told that he'd return, he never returned. Uh, it's not rocket science. We had a couple of projects over the last few months, a little medical area where they put a bio swell and a rain garden in that would capture water that's adjacent to a creek. No question, they did it, it's simple, it's not rocket science. You know, the, that, that's where I'm very disappointed and I absolutely concur with Jorge's, you know, with Jorge's questions. And also, uh, the definition of open space impacts, as you well know, tied to the, the arboretum. And we heard an awful lot about that from the general public. We never got adequate questions, responses related to lighting and impacts on the aviary. There are thousands, I, I can't recall how many thousands of Milburn schoolchildren that go to the arboretum as part of their, you know, their learning, you know, exercise. I think it was testified by one of the board members, but, um, you know, that, that was given very little short shrift. I don't believe anybody on the, on their, on the developer's team actually visited the arboretum, which is sort of important, as well as discharge into the creek, whether it's channelized or not. But as you've mentioned, Martha, it's, you know, part of the railway. Anyway, that's all I have to say, I'm very disappointed in the, in the lack of response related to stormwater. And I thoroughly concur with Jorge's, you know, assessment. Thank you.
Okay, um, thanks, Mark. Ed Boozak, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention in terms of the new stormwater management requirements, and Martha can correct me if I'm wrong. They are not applicable to this project. That doesn't mean to say that an applicant can't voluntarily do anything, but just so the record is clear. The new stormwater management regs are not applicable to this development application. The, the requirements were set forth at the time that they filed their application sometime ago.
Yes, you're absolutely right, Ed, those, uh, those stormwater regs, the new ones with the green infrastructure. We just passed that stormwater control ordinance, uh, just in, in March, March ninth. Our town adopted that new ordinance, but that came, this application came in in October, so they're not subject to these new requirements. And in fact, might not have even been aware of them at the time that they were preparing their application.
Okay, thank you, Mark, you had a follow up.
Yeah, I mean, I, Martha, I thoroughly appreciate that, but I also know that the stormwater regs weren't in place when that medical unit went in and the stormwater regs weren't in place when the Beehive project went through and they didn't have some of the things that a number of members on the board had, had requested or recommended. They went back to the developer and they said, these are reasonable requests. And they, they opted to do the lead silver, which is, you know, as, as Jorge alluded to before, it's not just bead, it's water, it's water conservation, it's the whole thing. Energy conservation, return on investment. And for those who may, you know, be, you know, in coa housing, they'll save significant money on, on energy costs. So it's a bigger package, but it's all about, as Jorge said, being a good neighbor to the community because you will be part of the community. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Um, Gaston.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair, Chairman. I, I've actually prepared a statement because I've been thinking about this all week long, so I'm just gonna read through it. Hopefully people can, can bear with me. I, I agree with Mr. Steinberg, I agree with Jorge, I agree with Mark. I think we were all feeling the same thing. But first of all, I wanted to thank the very talented and knowledgeable residents that attended the meetings, asked questions and gave testimony. This is a very significant application for our township and your questions and viewpoints helped bring out the nuances of issues, helped hone our questioning and helped show where application, the applicant's design was deficient or incorrect. And I'm very thankful that we're able to have a week to really gather our thoughts and about the decision on the application. As I said before, I'm in agreement with Mr. Steinberg and Jorge's and Mark Masl's comments. I'm very disappointed in the applicant and its mirror towards the township and its residents, particularly with its disregard for the residents' opinions, our resident's safety, preservation of the neighborhood's character and preservation and respect for our treasured arboretum and its inhabitants. I would hope the applicant would take their own advice and think about the community they're joining, similar to how we were encouraged in the closing statements to embrace the future residents and think about their happiness and enjoyment. That being said, I would like to clarify my position on certain items of the application. On the topic of pedestrian safety, in my opinion, zero pedestrian cat crashes is safe and it is the responsibility of the applicant to develop, present and build a safe environment. Although our definitions of safe may differ, I am thankful that the applicant has increased the level of safety for the pedestrians at our request. While zero cars is the ultimate safe condition, I believe with little cooperation and awareness from our residents, the sidewalk setback, the mirrors, the audio visual warning system and the warning mats will succeed in keeping us safe. On the topic of green building and lead certification, while the applicant is not required officially to achieve lead certification, testimony was given that the same standards and methods would be used as if they were getting lead certified. And the sustainability checklist in the application also states that the applicant will provide certain lists and construction techniques. As such, and I leave this wording up to Mr. Masl, there should be a condition of approval, but although certification is not being sought, the demolition, construction, outfitting of the complex should be performed according to lead guidelines and the information, sustainability checklist should be provided. And while we cannot require charging stations to be installed, as an engineer in the construction industry, I urge the applicant to make the cost wise decision of not necessarily installing the charging systems now, but planning and putting in infrastructure to accommodate the addition of the car, the charging stations. We all know that the electric vehicles are going to come and at least in the next ten or fifteen years, we're all gonna be switched over to electrical stuff, start planning now, please. On the topic of the arboretum and birds, as it is a privilege and positive attribute to be located next to the arboretum, the applicant in its own interest should preserve and protect the arboretum and its inhabitants. The E I S states that there are several species of special concern, two of which are birds, one a turtle, and that their occurrence in the site is likely due to the arboretum. The E I S goes on to state that there is no expected detrimental effect to local fauna. The arboretum is a designated bird sanctuary. The Milburn Environmental Resource Inventory notes that the East Orange Water Reserve and South Mountain Reservation do have a greater variety of num, and number of birds overall because of the larger area and varied habitats. In my opinion, not only is it hard to believe that there will be no detrimental effects on local fauna from a three year construction project of a sixty two unit apartment complex and a medical office next to an arboretum, but there's also no explanation as to how it was determined that there would be no detrimental effects. And the last quote about nearby reserves leads me to believe that the applicant thinks that the arboretum, although designated as a bird sanctuary, is insignificant because there were two larger reserves nearby. Uh, we heard sworn testimony from Dr. Morton, an assistant professor in avian studies and conservation, to the contrary, that migrating birds are affected by tall buildings and lights. And as such, it should be a condition of approval consistent with the township's obligation to care for the arboretum and goals five and six of the master plan that due to the building's proximity of the arboretum, a designated bird sanctuary, that the lighting of the building and its operation be designed to not interfere with migratory birds and that the complex's windows be bird safe to help prevent bird window strikes. And finally, on the topic of parking, it was brought up in the public comments by Mr. Herbertson. Six oh six point four point one point C point one accessory uses, our beloved accessory uses. This time we're gonna go with the first one, off street structured parking within the building. Uh, grade and below, surface parking that serves existing medical office space shall be permitted only if the required development components are constructed in phases as expressly provided herein. However, no such surface parking shall be permitted upon completion of all required development components. If I read that correctly, no surface parking is allowed for the medical office or for tenants and visitors of the apartment complex after completion of the required development components, the parking garages. I looked through a similar ordinance, R M F A F two, uh, I guess the zoning ordinance, and the language about the surface parking is not included. In fact, some surface parking is required in that one. This also means that the proposed cutout on Woodland Road is in violation of the ordinance and is not an acceptable solution for moving vans, delivery vehicles, medical transporters, etc. Depending on how we look at this, and I have to defer to our counsel, Mr. Boozak, but as such a condition of approval of, should be that the parking garage be able to accommodate all types of vehicles accessing the com, complex because there is no surf, surface parking related to this project. And if I may, Mr. Boozak, can you comment on the last item?
I will comment and I will also ask Mr. Phillips to comment. The section, and this deals with the surface parking, the section that you refer to, I do not believe applies to the cutout area or deliveries or uh, any kind of services that are provided, a move in, move out, Amazon deliveries, FedEx deliveries and so forth. I, I believe that that section related to no surface parking was intended to relate to the construction of the structured parking in which all of the required parking for the building uh, and the uses that are there, including the summit medical center would take place. There would be no surface parking. I don't think the, the provision of the cutout uh, and the ability to have deliveries made, uh, which is not permanent parking for residents or occupants of that building would not be a violation of that ordinance. But again, I'll defer to the planner on that.
I would agree on all counts with Mr. Boozak's representation. I don't know how the cutout would violate the ordinance per se and the parking requirements with regard to the surface or structured parking do relate to the parking needs of the residents as well as the summit uh, medical office and do not relate to any particular off street loading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Phillips. Um, and Ed Gaston, that was the response to the question you were looking for.
Yes, thank you, that concludes my statements.
Okay, great, I see Sanjeev has a hand raised and then Joe, I see you next, but let's start with Sanjeev.
So with the cutout, I, I have a question, follow question or not. That means when they are trying to make a cutout, they are trying to seek permission from the planning board for the cutout. Like an accessory use that they are in front of us and it's, it has become a part of the application. Is that correct?
I, I, I'm gonna at least start to answer that question. My understanding and recollection, and again, I'll defer to Martha and Paul, is that the, the cutout area is actually partially in the right of way. It's not all on their property. And in order to accomplish that, uh, they would need permission of the, of the township, first of all. And they have agreed, according to my notes, that to the extent that that cutout encroaches onto their property, that is beyond the right of way or the, the public right of way, they would provide an easement to allow that to happen.
So earlier, the applicant came in and said they are going to use the public right of way to park truck for move in and move out. FedEx delivery, UPS delivery, okay, five minutes, two minutes, three minutes stop. Move in, move out, take, this has been said, couple of hours? No, it takes four, five hours, depending on how bigger of a apartment you're moving in. So to me, a few hours parking on the street and moving furniture in and even move out, taking the furniture out, that is a very crucial part of the building. It is not just loading and unloading for two minutes or five minutes. So that to me is accessory use, they are trying to use the public right of way to do their own business there. Even ambulance, if that is coming in, it may not be there for too long. They may take the patient out and ambulance could park wherever they need to park. But I think here they're asking for our permission to actually let that happen. And, and to me, it is, it is, it is not right, sixty two apartments. If it was one apartment, two apartment, or maybe even five, maybe, but having sixty two apartments there, if they are asking and making this as a part of the application, I'm, I'm opposed to it, I, I don't feel that is right. So if they're asking for the permission later without this. Okay, we are in the comment phase, so I will bring this up right now. We all understand this is a fair share housing builder's remedy lawsuit or, or in that, in that reference, this building, this project is approved or the settlement happened. And yes, uh, we, we needed to have done something as a township altogether. And yes, we, we needed to have done something as a township altogether about the fair share housing, and that's why we have let this happen ourselves. We should have done something proactively prior, so we were not in this situation. Now we are in this situation, we have seen applicant and applicant's attorney, their bully attitude right up from the get go. In the middle, I think they softened down, but right up from the get go, they have a bullying attitude. They don't care. All the time answer was, oh, we are here, we have settlement agreement and this is going to happen and this is the way to go. So that overall attitude is not a good neighbor attitude. And guess what? With not being a good neighbor attitude, I'm going to be bad neighbor as well, and I will not let that parking or public right of way to have them park there. They got to take that into their own premises. So I do not agree with that at all. Okay, rooftop deck, finally, I guess some sense came to them and they realize and think, I, I agree with Gaston. Public has done a terrific job in bringing all the issues out. I know these guys are emotional because this is a quiet neighborhood and and they are worried, rightly so. But yes, I agree also on the other side, we should have done something on the fair share housing before, which we haven't done, and that's why we are in this situation. But if you're going to be there for a very long time, guess what, guys? You, you better come in as a good neighbor. So I'm all for the building, whatever these guys want to do there, but not for anything that is not legal or in this case scenario, they're trying to put in there as a slip, prove this as well. No, that's my stand on it.
Thanks, Sanjeev.
Chairwoman.
Yeah.
Can I ask either Martha or Paul to to comment on the on the cutout? Because I, I made some statements and I made them subject to their their comments, and I just want to get that straight because I don't want the record to be inaccurate.
Well, I'll speak first, Ed, and then I'll let Paul speak. It, this is, it would definitely be in the township right of way and if I'm not mistaken, I think we had a similar cutout situation on the Beehive properties, which, and I correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, but I thought that the, it was the approval was based on gaining permission from Essex County as Essex Street is a county road. So in similar manner, this would have to be approved in the same way. It would be conditional upon approval by the township committee, our governing body to permit that cutout to occur. So that's, that is the way that I would expect it to happen.
So if that is the case, why is this on this application here? And just to remind it, Beehive property, that applicant was adhering to all the recommendation, was being a good neighbor, and still I voted no for the same reason. And I'm going to be very fair from that application to this application. And that is after them being very good neighbor. Here applicant and the law firm from the applicant, they both have not become or not have actually, I've not seen that being a good neighbor is the attitude here.
And and before Paul speaks on the cutout, I, I do want to say something because this statement's been made by a number of people. I appreciate the reaction of the board and the board members to perhaps the applicant or the applicant's counsel not agreeing to do certain things, not as has been said repeatedly here, being a good neighbor. And and those are issues that are legitimate issues for this board to be concerned about. However, that said, those are not a basis upon which to grant or deny an application. That those are, those are issues that you can express certainly at this meeting, but those are not issues, those are not criteria upon which this board can make a decision because an applicant, for example, is not a good neighbor and hasn't hasn't voluntarily agreed to do X while some other applicant has voluntarily agreed to do that. That's fine, and it's kudos to the other applicant who has done that. And I, I dare say that the board members are correct that all of that, you know, will, will make the project more acceptable to the community and more acceptable to the township. So I don't disagree with the underlying concept, but I want to caution the board that that criteria is not, absolutely not a criteria upon which this board or any member of this board can make a determination as to whether or not this applicant has satisfied the provisions in the ordinance and the settlement agreement.
So Mr. Bozek, a question here is, Ms. Callahan just mentioned that the cutout needs to go to the township committee for the approval. Now, with approving this application here based on that, are we overstepping on township committee?
No, any, any such approval would be subject to the township committees' concurrence or approval of that. If the township committee says no, we're not going to give permission to you to utilize the right of way and create the cutout, then the applicant's unable to do it because they have not been able to secure the permission of the township and there, there won't be that cutout in the right of way.
And then the whole design goes down because they don't have a way to bring the truck into the building.
Well, that, it's true that they, the testimony has been that given the size of the trucks and the size of the garage, they will not be able to bring the trucks into the building. But there's nothing in the ordinance that requires that those kinds of transitory activities. And I acknowledge that a move in and move out is not a ten minute in and out, it's, it's hours to do it, but there's nothing in the ordinance that requires the applicant to do that, what you want to do, want them to do. It may be a good idea, it may have been a good idea, and and I dare say it is a good idea. But again, the fact that an applicant is either unwilling or unable to do that unless we can point to something in the ordinance that says you cannot have deliveries on the public street or have move in and moves out, move outs of trucks on the public street for whether it's single family homes or multi-family homes, a move in and out of a street on a single family home takes probably a longer period of time. And depending upon where that home is, could have the same impacts as a move in and move out here. It may be more frequent here because of the size of the building, but the impact on the traffic would be the same. So again, there's nothing in the ordinance that allows this board to require something like that. We can ask the applicant, the applicant's attempted to accommodate it in some way, it may not be acceptable to the board, but if there's no requirement that he does it, then there's no basis upon which the board can deny the application because the applicant has not done it or has tried to do it and the township has denied permission to allow him to do it.
But the ordinance doesn't even say or allow them to do this way. The ordinance doesn't say one or the other thing, so it's our interpretation versus their interpretation.
Well, I don't think it's that. I, I think that if you're going to take the position that the ordinance does not say that they can, for example, move in and move out by parking a vehicle on the street, then you're going to have to take that position in the entire township. So in any public street, there'll be no ability of anyone to park a moving vehicle on a street in order to move in or move out of any residential dwelling unit in the township. And I don't think that has been the case in the township. I don't think the township wants that to be the case because that's going to create problems. I'm not even sure that that would be justifiable under the police powers of the municipality to prevent moving vehicles, for example, from parking on a public street while conducting a move in or move out. And effectively, that's what's being suggested here, and I just don't think it's just viable.
No, I, I think I'm not explaining it correctly. All the multi-family home today, they do not use public right of way for move in and move out. I'm not talking about single family home. Most of the single family home has driveways, but all the bigger buildings, we have three, Short Hills Terrace, Short Hills Village, and then there is another one. All three of them use their own premises for move in and move out. They actually do not use public right of way. If, if I'm saying anything wrong, maybe someone can correct me, but this is my understanding. And and getting that into the township committee, again, I, I wasn't going to do anything before this voting happens. So we are, we are not influencing it here. But overall, having for a multi-family home, which has more than probably ten apartments, here we are talking about sixty two, having them to have their move in and move out within the premises, I think it's a very doable thing. And it's a logical thing, if you ask me, completely logical to do it that way. If there is one single family home, someone moves in, that's one moving. Here they're doing sixty two times. Yes, traffic wise, it's a big deal. It's not similar. Again, my perspective.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'm done.
No, no, if there's an ordinance in the township, and it may be that I am unaware of, that requires that move in and move outs of multi-family buildings be done from on premise locations and not on a public street, then that, that ordinance, that requirement would be applicable here and they wouldn't be able to do it. So if that's the case, then they, they won't be able to do exactly what you don't want them to do.
Which is not the case right now, so it's fine. Thank you, Mr. Bozek.
You're welcome.
Sure. And Paul, did you want to add anything to that dialogue or?
I, I, Mr. Bozek and and Martha articulated what my understanding is. I would just only echo Mr. Bozek's comment that the underlying zoning has no requirement for an off street loading space, that the applicant's not required to do that. Now, you may think that's bad or was a mistake or don't agree with it. And I appreciate that, but there's no obligation of the developer to provide that onsite under the zoning. There's no variance relief being requested. I think that this developer, similar to Beehive, by proposing the cutout, was actually trying to be responsive to the concerns expressed by the board and the public of basically having the, the moving truck block that portion of, of the street. And yes, indeed, it's going to require municipal approval because it's partially in the right of way. And I assume, as Ed said, it would be a condition of the approval. But I, I see this as being no different than Beehive, which is a project that this board approved. There's a cutout for loading there, similar to what's proposed here. Now, again, you may not agree with the, the way what's was in the ordinance, but you know, we can't walk that back at this point.
Okay, thank you. So Joe, you had a comment earlier.
Yes, thank you. Am I muted?
No, we're good. We can hear you.
Okay, fine. First of all, I want to say that I understand completely the importance of this application and how it comes about and that it is the product, so to speak, of a settlement and subject to a settlement agreement. And I understand also that if this application were to be denied, there would be potentially at least a tremendous amount of subsequent litigation. There could, of course, be a re-submission of the application, but I have basically two issues, and I'm going to stick with those issues in my comments. The first has to do with the rooftop decks. There are two of them that were proposed in this project and only one has been withdrawn. I want to say that a lot of the neighborhood concerns were equally concerns with the rooftop deck that has been withdrawn and the one that has not been withdrawn. The one that has not been withdrawn, if I read the plan correctly, is available for about four, five, six units. And the concerns that the neighbors had were in part with, was in part with the potential for noise that would disrupt the neighborhood. And I think that the concern remains in that regard. So I think that both of these rooftop decks should have been deleted, not, not today on the eve of the potential vote tonight, but literally weeks and months ago. But that's neither here nor there. The law firm is at the mercy of the client. I know that well. And maybe the law firm saw the handwriting on the wall and suggested, and suggested this withdrawal of the top rooftop deck and maybe the other deck as well, and maybe, but I'm just speculating here as to whose idea was to finally come to the realization that the neighborhood comes first and the applicant comes second. The, the other comment I have, and Gaston, I hope that you don't mind that I disagree with you. But you made a comment in which you said you thought, if I heard you correctly, that the safety issues had been addressed. They have not been addressed. And what if I understand what happened here and this here, Mr. Bozek and I disagree. But that's fine. Lawyers always disagree with lawyers, so that can be marked up to just a basic disagreement between two lawyers. But our Gaston, what happened was that the applicant came in and said, they brought a witness in who said, we could, there are, there are various things that could be done to make these cross the sidewalk openings to the garage safe. And they rattled off, their expert rattled off a whole bunch of them. My recollection is pretty clear that the attorney, and Mr. Orth, it's not you, that the attorney never said, we're willing to negotiate some of these. Give us the opportunity to sit down with you or with a representative of the board or with one of your township experts to talk about what we might do to make this more safe. So the way things stand now, there is, there is no safety. There are no auditory, there are no visual, there are no mirrors, there's nothing. Those openings to the garage are absolutely as unsafe today as they were when they were first proposed. And maybe the witness, maybe the applicant is willing to negotiate, but we only heard this when the attorney summed up at the last meeting. Never did the witness, who I know well and who, as I said before, if, 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 if anyone wanted to scare the hell out of this board, that's all they had to do was bring the two pictures of those two openings to the parking garages, one in Jersey City, and I think the other was, is also somewhere in Hudson County. That's all they had to do was bring those pictures to this board. And we've had plenty of testimony before this board of neighbors and we are all members of this community and are well aware of the location of that elementary school and the fact that kids on bikes and on foot walk back and forth to that school in front of this building. walk back and forth to that school in front of this building, the proposed building. And I am not going to vote for a proposal that leaves those kids unprotected by any of these devices that were proposed as possibilities. The attorney never said, by the way, and the witness never said, we're willing to talk to you. We're willing to talk to one of your representatives or to Mr. Phillips or to Martha Callahan about making some adjustments to those openings. Yes, did the witness propose a whole, say that there's a whole bunch of them that are available? Yes. Did anybody ever say, let's sit down and talk about this? No. And those, if if this project were to be approved tonight by this board, those kids' safety is endangered in my judgment. And I'm not, and the blood of those kids are not going to be on my hands. I'll tell you that. I'm not going to vote for this project on that basis. Now, I understand that if the project is turned down flat by this board because it doesn't get the number of votes that are required to approve it, that there could be some very significant expensive and potentially dangerous to the municipality, at least, litigation that would proceed. So I would hope that council and Mr. Orth, I'm sorry that you were brought into this at the last minute. But I would hope that council would say that we, let's not proceed to a vote tonight. Let's talk about the possibility of adopting some of these proposals that were made by Mr. Dean. Not proposals, but suggestions for safety across those sidewalks from the entrances to the garage. Right now, those are, in my judgment, terribly unsafe. And I'm not going to vote for them. So I would hope, I would hope that we could have a further adjournment of this matter. And some proposals could be made either by the town or by the applicant. And some negotiations could occur that would result in additional safety measures similar to many of those that were deemed, quote, available, end of quote, by Mr. Dean. Anyway, I think that, so Gaston, I'm simply saying to you that I don't want anybody on this board to think that a single one of those proposals has ever been adopted by the applicant. Not a single one has, not a single. The the project as to those cross the sidewalk entrances to the garage remain totally unsafe, as unsafe today as they were when this matter was first brought before the board.
Thanks, Joe. I know that council had a comment on your.
I do, and and Mr. Orth may have a comment as well, but let me start. I think the applicant's position, I agree with Mr. Steinberg, that the applicant provided a menu of different options to address safety issues. My recollection is that the applicant said, we will do any one or all of those safety measures that were proposed, whatever the the board and its experts determine should be done. And in Mr. Lucino's closing, I believe, last week, he said that there and and correctly said that some of those proposals will involve permission from the township again in terms of items that may be put on the sidewalk. That would be a public right of way, not on private property. And that others, i.e. the police chief, DPW, or engineer and so forth, may have specific comments with regard to which of those features or all of those features would be appropriate, and they were willing to abide by that. I do agree that they did not say, as Mr. Steinberg correctly said, you know, let's sit down and talk about it. They put it in the board's hands, but I think the board, if they so desire, can deal with that issue in the manner in which I just said. Thank you. I don't know, Mr. Orth, I don't know if you have anything to say. If I misstated the applicant's position, you can put that on the record.
Oh, thank, thank you, Mr. Boosak. You you did state the applicant's position correctly. We are asking for a vote tonight. However, I will say it would, it would not be unusual for a condition to be imposed with respect to safety issues that have been presented here for the applicant to coordinate with the appropriate township official as it concerns the devices that a advisor to the board or other township official believes should be installed in that location. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Orth. Vice Chairwoman Salerno.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, just so I wanted to pick up on a few things that my fellow board members mentioned. While we're on the topic of the pedestrian safety, would it be, would it be appropriate to have a requirement that the applicant work with the pedestrian safety committee to come up with an appropriate plan for that street, given that there is, you know, to involve the pedestrian safety committee, given that there is a elementary school right there? I don't know if that would be an appropriate method for kind of negotiating with the community on the appropriate safety measures, but it is something that our town has. Because I do agree that there are a lot of, you know, options out there, and they did present some methods that I found, you know, compelling. But I also agree with Joe that we don't have anything specific planned. So some way of kind of facilitating, putting together a pedestrian safety plan for the the building, if that would be appropriate, could be a good option. And then I also wanted to pick up on what Gaston said. Because I do feel that in the spirit of being a good neighbor, it's important that we are a good neighbor to the arboretum and the migratory birds that that frequent the arboretum. So I did want to echo what he said about having safe lighting and windows for for the birds. And I think Jorge also mentioned that as well. So I did want to, you know, put my support in for that requirement as well as, you know, I I also found it compelling when Gaston said, you know, planning for electric vehicles, there's infrastructure that you could have in place so that when you do decide to put charging stations in the parking garage, even if you're not going to do it right away, it makes it easier to do that in the long term. So I just wanted to echo those sentiments from my fellow board members. Thanks.
Thank you, Miriam. Mark, I see your hand.
Just for the record, I do believe that they did commit to 10, I I believe it was 10 EV stations, and that was very early on. It was a question I posed to Mr. LaFonsama. And I believe that's one that they did say, but you'd have to check. Because I don't know, I've asked so many questions that I received no answers to, as well as several members of the board, as well as several members of the community who were arrogantly berated. And I'm livid, quite frankly. Anyway, and I appreciate Mr. Mr. Boosak's, you know, you know, statement that, you know, this is the result of a, you know, of a housing settlement and its potential litigation. But it's got to be consistent with our master plan, the spirit of the master plan, which I did hear in one of the meetings. And it's got to be consistent with, you know, the ordinances of the township. And that's all from me. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mark. Council, oh, I'm sorry, Gaston, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to tell Joe, no worries. I, yeah, I'm all, I'm all with the the child safety. I actually serve on the PSEB committee. So I definitely am concerned with it. I was under the impression that the four that I had named earlier that they are going to do or they committed to do, the only one they haven't committed to do was the clear windows on Woodland Road, and it wasn't able to be done on Chatham Road. So hopefully that still stands. I don't know if we can go back in the record and check. But to me, that was agreed to already. We did look at other options. I've researched this myself. When the, when Mr. Dean, I think his name was, would say something, I went and researched to see if it was, you know, possible. For instance, the pedestrian monitor. It's actually all the things that are on our cars that protect or predict or detect pedestrians, they don't work very well in those cases. So it's not that the, we're not employing the technology or it's not that we we haven't explored everything. Perhaps I haven't explored everything, but I've taken a good look at it. And again, I say, the ultimate safe position is to have no cars. Unfortunately, that doesn't work. And they are making a good effort in trying to make it safe for everybody. And just as another note, if the kids are riding the bikes on sidewalks, that is not safe. They need to be on the street. We need to have protected spaces for them on the street because bikes are just as dangerous to people and pedestrians as cars. So hopefully, they don't do that. But that being said, please understand, Joe, I'm with you. No blood on anybody's hands, trying to protect everybody. But yeah, let's, we just got to make sure things are straight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else want to speak or Mr. Bear, go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. Following blood on the hands, so it's. Anyways, I surely understand. And Jorge, I commend you in your early remarks. I don't agree with all of them, but I do commend you in the sense that you made the case that the EIS was deficient. And I think I I made that case as well. And I agree with you that the EIS was significantly deficient in many ways, particularly on the construction side, as you talked about. I'd like to ask Mr. Phillips a couple of questions, if I could. Oh, and just go back and 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 relive a little bit of history on this project. Okay, in this application, if we could. Now, this, this, this project was the result of a developer remedy case, correct? And that the developer remedy initial application was for 103 units? Is that correct?
No, the actual history going back is that before there was a builder's remedy case, there was a potential ordinance in place that did not, was voted on and did not pass. That ordinance was for 62 units, but it was for a less massive and less tall building as is before you this evening. When that didn't pass, the builder filed a builder's remedy suit and negotiations took place. And ultimately, what was settled on is reflected in the settlement agreement, which you've looked at, the conceptual plan and the implementing ordinance, which flows from, obviously, the settlement plan and the and the concept plan. And the major distinction is that it's a more massive and taller building than was originally proposed.
The the settlement agreement, which was a, an agreement done, I'll say in good faith, between the applicant and members of the township committee, resulted in this avocation for 62 units. But it was my understanding there was an original proposal for a project that was substantially larger.
The 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 original project was the same 62 units, Dan.
Okay, so, so in essence, let's talk about the purview of this of this board and really what what we're operating under. The rules and regulations that guide our decision tonight, the ordinance. We're essentially bound by the settlement agreement. And the settlement agreement is for 62 units. And that settlement agreement, subsequently, there was zoning that was written specific to that settlement agreement to bound this project with respect to the agreement that was made between the applicant and the township committee, members of the township committee. And I think you and Mr. Boosak were also part of that negotiation, correct?
That's an accurate representation, Dan. I'll just, I'll defer to Mr. Boosak. And Ed was, I guess, the only other question I have, was the planning board a party to that settlement?
Yes, the planning board's a party to the settlement.
So it's not just the township committee, Dan, it's also the planning board.
Right. So so this avocation, in a sense, complies with that order, with the with the ordinance, with the zoning that was prescribed for this particular development, except for two small variances, correct?
I think that's an accurate representation, yes.
One for temporary parking and one for the reduction in the size of a of one of the units outside patios, correct?
That's correct. It's actually a reduction in the size. You're correct.
Our role tonight is somewhat, with respect to the zoning ordinance, with respect to the purview of the planning board, we were handed something that was negotiated by the township committee that we must opine upon. And our role is relatively limited with respect to what we can rule upon, which is, in essence, the the application's consistency with the zoning ordinance. Now, the zoning ordinance, and I hate to use this, well, I'm using it, kind of trumps the master plan because zoning ordinance is the implementation tool for the master plan. The master plan is a visionary document. Am I, am I correct in my, in my evaluation here?
I I would say that's a fair characterization.
So what really kind of rules the game here is the zoning ordinance. And there was zoning that was specifically prescribed and written for this project.
Yes.
Okay, so I, thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you, Dan. And I appreciate that. I think that's helpful context. And I wanted to add myself. Joe, I very much appreciate the two points that you made. I disagree with you on the first one regarding the concern about the noise that would emanate from decks. I think, you know, many times during the application, we heard from members of the public, you know, calling it referenced a party deck. And then, and we heard pleas in public comment, which, you know, I took to heart of saying, if you have to approve this, you know, at least ask the deck to be to be off. And and I think that was in reference to the uppermost deck as pleased that the applicant chose to remove that. So I feel that, you know, if we're going back to that reference of good neighbor, I feel that they did hear our community's concerns and address them. I have a lot less concerns about the the interior, you know, roof level deck on the roof of the parking garage. And because I, my, my opinion, again, just like you have an opinion, is that that won't be nearly as disruptive potentially to any community as the one, you know, adjacent to the arboretum. But I, I, you know, I think we've now danced a little bit around this issue and had clarifications of what what we would like to impose or not impose regarding pedestrian safety at the street level. And one other comment, just, Joe, I wanted to reiterate as as a parent of elementary age students in our schools, not at the Glenwood School, which is there, but but another one in town. Children are generally not dismissed and allowed to just walk home themselves under a certain age. So for the most part, children are supervised by their parents or caregivers. So I personally, as a parent of elementary age children, have less concern about just children just walking and wandering by themselves, you know, along that that development right now. That's just my personal opinion. So I do, I would never. So I do, I would never want to see any of our towns' children, any children put in danger. So I think what we would, I would like us to come to a conclusion on, you know, Miriam had a really, I think, useful suggestion of, of requiring, you know, the applicant to work with a committee that already exists. But I don't know if, and I see Gaston's giving a thumbs up in agreement. I don't know if that is an appropriate way or if we, Ed would like to ask if the applicant's attorney is willing to agree to that?
Well, let me start and then Mr. Orth can, can respond. I think they've already responded generically. But yes, I think the planning board can impose a condition that the applicant work with the township professionals and with the township and with any committee of the township to address those issues and come to a, a recommendation or a conclusion on which of those safety devices that were mentioned should be implemented. I think the applicants agreed to implement, as I said, any one or all of them. And I think that the, I, I was not aware of the existence of pedestrian safety committee. But that certainly seems like, you know, an appropriate entity to be part of those discussions, as well as the professionals, the police department, the DPW, the township engineer, the planner and so forth. Mr. Orth, I don't know if you had anything to add?
The applicant would agree to that stipulation.
Okay, thank you. Any other members? I think most of us were able to speak. If anybody else had any further thoughts or responses? Okay. So it's that point in the evening. Are there any other items which are as of yet unaddressed, which we would need to be, to move forward on? Any motions? Ed, do you have any, I don't know if you had any sort of outstanding bullet points of items that we would need to address before moving on anything? You are muted, I'm sorry.
As I, as I've said on, on many occasions, my most insightful comments are made when I'm muted. I, I have a number of items that I've, or actually Susan and I have been able to develop. And, and there may be more. And as you know, what we normally do is we'll list the kinds of things that we can, that we've talked about and that, that we can list here. But ultimately, if the board votes in favor of the application, we would prepare the resolution. The board would review the resolution. If there's any additional conditions or any conditions there, the board is not, is not inclined to accept. They, they would delete them and ultimately adopt the resolution. So the ones that I have include the following. That the loadings are cut out on, on Woodland Road to be subject to the approval of the township committee. And then the other governmental entities having jurisdiction there over. And these are not in a particular order, so they, they may sound a little disjointed. Hopefully they'll be a little bit more structured when we prepare a resolution if the board so determines. There were discussions about lease provisions. And the applicant agreed that there would be no move in or move outs occurring Monday to Friday between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Only on weekdays after 5:00 PM or on weekends. There would be a prohibition in the leases against dens being converted into bedrooms. And there would be a provision that there would be no closet, not in the lease necessarily, but there would be no closets in dens. The gymnasium would be limited to 10 to 15 people at a time for residence uses only, no guests. Not available to Summit Medical group employees. There would be some additional landscaping, the lower rear portions of the building along the finger of the site, joining lot 76, where there are more than two levels of parking exposed to be screened so that it, it does not look like there's anything more than two levels exposed. That would be subject to the approval of the township forester and the township engineer. You will recall, there was a discussion about having some type of VA vine creepers. And it was going to be put in there, but then someone testified, I can't remember who, that, that may be an invasive species. So the applicant was going to provide alternative cover that again would be approved by the township engineer and the forester. There would be, they raised planer beds along the exposed garage facades south of the main courtyard. Wouldn't be placed at a height that does not obstruct the woodland garage entry. Landscaping would be provided for the portion of the facade south of Woodland Road garage entry in the area joining block 1904, lot 107. And will be continued and extended to wrap around the southern tip of the building. The light fixtures on the building would be mounted at a 12-foot height on the southwest apartment wing of the building and provide low-level illumination for the public walkway at the rear of the new building, which is township, the township walkway that is now illuminated by existing lights. The applicant agreed to provide temporary lighting during construction to ensure that that pathway continues to be lit while construction is taking place. And, and up until a time that the lighting on the building is substituted for those lights along the pathway. All lighting adjacent to the arboretum area will be shielded and downward facing. They'll, parking in any of the public right of ways by construction vehicles during any phase that construction is prohibited. There will be, in the parking garage designated parking spaces for Summit Medical. During construction, the applicant will ensure access to all public rights of way and sidewalks. Will ensure that they, will ensure access to those public rights of way and sidewalks are maintained and not impeded during construction. Construction drawing as well address pedestrian safety issues during construction, including the building of a temporary sidewalk, fencing off portions of the existing sidewalk if necessary and so forth. All of be worked out with the, in the pre-construction meetings and then ultimately the developers agreement. With regard to signage, the applicant is to provide detailed plans for facade signage for the medical offices and any of the residential apartments, the elevations, perspectives of floor plans to be reviewed and subject to the approval of the planner and the engineer, all of that to conform obviously to township ordinances. We talked about the garage entries. And there, there would be the condition that the applicant shall install one or all of the, and I won't go through them here, but the four, I believe it was four options. And we can include in there that the applicant will meet with the, with representatives of the township, township professionals and representatives of committees in the township to identify which or all of those should be installed. And obviously the installation of those safety measures would be subject to the review and approval of the township engineer. It'd be a developers agreement that would address a number of the issues that we just talked about. And these come, the applicant would comply with the reports that have been submitted by the various professionals, including the fire marshal's memo related to the fire sprinkler system in the building, the NFPA 13 fire sprinkler system. And we have, I think, four lots here that the lots will be merged into a single, a single lot for this development. There'd be all the standard conditions that we have. You know, compliance with all laws and rules, funding of the escrows, funding of the engineers, escrow and so forth. And again, as I said, there would be, there may be other conditions. And if I've missed any and the board has them, they can certainly provide them to us. We, we will review our notes further any minutes. And I believe the applicant may even be obtaining a transcript that would be of additional assistance. Although, you know, some of these conditions change because they're, we talk about them as conditions and then the application evolves. But, but Madam Chairwoman, that's the, the best we can do with this juncture.
Appreciate it. I see David Morrow has his hand raised. Go ahead, David.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I, I think you, Mr. Bouzak, you've covered a, a number of the items that were brought up, not only by the board, but also by members of the community. I think tonight it was referenced a number of times additionally. I, I think, I, I don't know what type of expert, whether it's an ornithologist or somebody who has, you know, an expertise in wildlife and arborist-type applications. Take a look at the side of the project that faces the arboretum, that abuts the arboretum and ensures that any of the features that are utilized on that side of the, the building and the development are considerate of, you know, the arboretum in its direct proximity.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow.
Thank you, yeah.
I think Ms. Salerno had also raised a similar kind of issue, so we'll chat.
Great. And with that, and with that addition, any, oh, Gaston, I'm sorry.
Can we do one more? And I'm gonna leave this one to Mark. Mark, I don't know if it is, if it makes any sense, because they did testify about building stuff to lead standards that we put in a condition that they do have to do that, they can't do less than that. I don't know if that would help or make any difference, even though they're not getting the certification. What do you think?
Without third-party attribution, I would not trust it based on the way the community was treated and the board was treated throughout the process. So you can say what you want in writing, but unless you have third-party attribution, as Mr. Morrow has done dozens of times in his design and as Mr. Tobia basically referenced in the six or seven projects that he used as examples, who I believe every one of those will be certified, at least the ones that I wrote down and did a little research on. I would not trust it. You, you need third-party attribution. But thank you.
Is, is there anything we can put, put into the condition that would help us with that? Even though we don't have this, that we don't have people specifically doing it, can they report to us in some way that's not too burdensome?
No, they, they wouldn't do it, A, B, they don't have the expertise. And C, you need the third-party attribution, so it needs to be lead certified. And then none of the questions I asked related to the return on investment and, you know, and basically the tax credits that you get by doing lead, which would make up the, you know, the, the cost, the initial cost in a matter of a year to a year and a half were answered. So I, I appreciate that, but I don't believe that, that it's possible.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you. With that, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the application with qualifications as just stated by Mr. Bouzak?
I will make a motion. You approve the application with the list of call, that Mr. Bouzak presented.
Thank you. And did anybody want a second? I will second the motion. Eileen, you're muted.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Gaston Halpert?
Yes.
Jorge Mastro Pietro?
I abstain.
Mark Mattzel?
No.
Joseph Steinberg?
Abstain.
Sanji Benayak?
Abstain.
David Morrow?
Yes.
Miriam Salerno?
Yeah.
That's all?
Yes.
What's the, what's the vote?
Five yes, one no, three abstentions.
How many yes?
Five.
Just, just approved.
So with five votes, five yes votes, that is a majority of the board approved. So application 20007 approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We appreciate all the time and effort spent on this and we look forward to coming back as this project proceeds.
Thank you, Mr. Orth. Okay. While we are, we have another application, as we know, and we're, which I would like to begin tonight. Application 21001. I would like to just request a two-minute recess. So if we can just return in just two minutes, Eileen, if you want, you know, you can bring in their counsel.
Okay.
Thanks.
Just you and me, Joe.
Yeah. And the only reason I'm here is that I don't know how to turn it off. And be sure that I can turn it back on. Maybe that's true of fishermen as well. I'll be back.
I'm still here, Nicole. I didn't leave you. I gotta take my allergy medicine. I can't breathe.
I'm still here too.
Hi.
Hi. Wow, this was a long time coming. So.
Yep.
Hey. So Mr. Shan, I think you're with us now. I don't know if you, we're not seeing you just yet, but I don't know if you spoke with Ms. Dabbett, if you have any initial witnesses that we would also want to bring in while we're gathering?
Yes, Madam Chair, the witnesses for this application are Albert Costantini. Are you there, Albert?
He's there. And Peter Bob.
Robert Lines?
Yes, he is here also.
And Wayne Jacks.
Okay.
Has he checked in, Eileen?
I brought them all over.
All right, Wayne is here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, good evening. And, Mr. Shan, is there a way we can have your camera on so we can see you?
How's that?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Good, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm glad you joined us. I believe, uh, we're just waiting for Mr. Steinberg to come back, so let's just hold for another moment before we commence. Okay, here we go. Alright, looks like we're, uh, we're all back, so let, um, let's begin. This is application 21001, minor site plan approval for the new Country Club. I'm sorry, preliminary and final.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And maybe I, may I begin by entering my appearance on the record? It's Bartholomew A. Sheehan Jr. appearing on behalf of Dempsey, Dempsey, and Sheehan, attorneys for the applicant Canoe Brook Country Club. Madam Chair and members of the board, this application is neither complicated nor controversial, and hopefully it is one that can be completed expeditiously. It is, as you stated, for a preliminary and final minor site plan approval for a golf-related storage building on-site at the Milburn Township Golf Course owned by Canoe Brook Country Club. On April 7, 2020, the 2,694-square-foot single-story golf bag storage facility was burned to the ground in a fire. This building was an integral necessity for golf operations and had been at the subject location for decades before the fire. This application proposes to restore the fire destroyed bag storage building in the former location, expanded by 712 square feet to accommodate modernizing upgrades necessary to reflect current custom and vogue in the industry for such a facility. The application conforms with the development regulations that apply in the C District, in which a golf club is a permitted use. Since the area of this I'm sorry, since the area of disturbance is confined to 3,415 square feet, and the site consists of 129 acres or over 5,600,000 square feet, waivers have been requested from the requirement to provide an entire site survey with related specific details as referenced in the filed application. The applicant has three witness witnesses to present in this presentation and would ask if the board has no questions at this time to begin by asking that Albert Costantini be admitted to the platform purposes of being sworn and giving testimony.
Great, thank you. We, uh, yeah, we can have him come in and we'll hear Mr. Costantini's credentials.
Good evening. My name's Albert Costantini. I'm the general manager-
Wait, wait, we need to-
No, no, yeah, apologies.
We need to swear you in first.
Okay.
If you just raise your right hand, please, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not by the truth?
I do.
Okay, state your name, spell your name for the record, please.
Albert Costantini, C-O-S-T-A-N-T-I-N-I.
What is your occupation, Mr. Costantini?
I'm the general manager of Canoe Brook Country Club.
And how long have you served in that position?
I've been at Canoe Brook for nine years.
What is the limited nature of this application?
Uh, it's to reconstruct a bag storage building that was destroyed in a fire last year, as you stated, to augment storage caddy areas, caddy staging areas, and and outside operations staff office.
And will the interior of the proposed facility be the subject of the architect's testimony?
Yes.
All right, will the proposed building, if constructed, be visible off-site?
Minimally, there will be sightlines from some houses up on the hill, but they would have been the same houses that saw the old bag building. No, no sightlines from any other, any other direction of the club.
Is it fair that you are referring to the Timber Acres Road properties?
Yes, I am.
And would those be in excess of 500 feet away from this building?
Yes, they are.
Will the architecture of the proposed bag storage building be complimentary to the recently constructed buildings at the site?
Yes, they will.
Now, can you indicate whether you have retained experts to assess you, assist you in the presentation of this application?
I I can do that. We have Robert Lines from the engineering firm of Motte McDonald, and Wayne Jacks representing the architectural firm of Jefferson Group Architecture.
Did you commission the architect to prepare rendered elevations of this proposed improvement?
Yes, we did.
Madam Secretary, would you share your screen to project the rendered elevation prepared by Jefferson Architects?
I don't have the ability to do that.
Mr. Jacks, are you able to provide a shared screen of that rendered elevation?
Very quickly, it'll take me a couple of minutes.
Right, while Mr. Jacks is lining that up, Mr. Costantini, based on your communications with your experts, do you believe that the proposal confirms in all respects with the development regulations requirements of Milburn Township?
Yes, I do.
Now, Mr. Jacks, what I was looking for was the schematic design presentation that is a photoshopped presentation. Is that not available? It was, it was provided by your office in the last week.
I'm only looking for that.
Well, perhaps while Mr. Jacks is looking for that, it can be introduced, Madam Chair, as a part of his testimony, and we can move directly to the testimony of the civil engineer, Robert Lines.
Mr. Shan, let me, and let me just clarify to make sure I understand. So we have Mr. Costantini, you know, under oath, and he was going to testify, but you would like to to pause that while we're waiting for images and bring in a civil engineer?
Um, well, uh, if there are any questions of Mr. Costantini at this point, it might be valuable to it. Oh, here we go.
Okay, thank you. Stay informed of that.
Mr. Costantini, the sheet, the screen is shared with a rendered elevation. Is this the rendered elevation that you commissioned to demonstrate what this proposed building will in fact look like if constructed?
Yes, it is.
All right, I can, I apologize. Can I pause? Because we, if we're gonna enter this in, we're gonna wanna number our sheets and number our items?
We will mark this as A1, please.
Thank you. Sorry for interrupting you. Go ahead.
That's all right. Uh, I would submit this witness to the examination of the board and members of any of the interested public.
I'm sorry, is this Mr. Lines or Mr. Jacks? I'm I'm a little bit confused here as to who's testifying.
Neither, Mr. Boozak. This is, this is Mr. Costantini.
Okay, he's still testifying. Okay, I apologize.
That's all right. He's available for questions.
Are, is somebody going to describe what we're looking at?
Well, this is, I can describe this as the front facade of the proposed building. Looking left to right, we have an area inside that would be the caddy staging room that would consist of tables, chairs, restroom facilities, and some, some amenities for, for food and beverage for the caddies. The center area would be the bag storage area, and then to the right would be a new office area for the outside operations staff who are currently under a tent out, out in the front, in the bag drop area.
And that description will be ratified by the architect's testimony with the floor plan, correct?
Correct.
Ready, again, Madam Chair, no further questions of this witness.
Great, thank you. Mr. Costantini, I do have a question, um, and I guess if if I could ask you, thank you for sharing the screen. If you could unshare, just so I can see other members of the board, um, in case anybody else. Thank you so much. Um, so, Mr. Costantini, um, the proposal is to increase the size of what was the former clubhouse by about 25% or something roughly, as I do the math in my head. Can you characterize what that, what the use is and what would the additional need for the, you know, the additional space for this caddy bag house?
Yeah, that was, it would be threefold. It would be to accommodate a larger number of golf bags in storage, representing the size of the membership that we have. Uh, it would be enhanced area for the caddies as they're, you know, waiting to, for their turn to go out on a loop. Um, and the, I would, I would venture to say that a large portion of the increased square footage is the creation of a, of an inside area for the outside op staff to use as an office, so they can stay out of inclement weather, they can do their clerical work, uh, and and have an appropriate space for a facility like ours.
Great, thank you. And has the membership of the club increased?
Uh, it goes up and down based on, on, you know, various reasons, but we are, we have a, a bylaw imposed cap on, on our proprietary membership. Uh, we are still below our historical high from what we call a full-time equivalent, equivalent membership. Um, so we, we're, you know, we, we are, we are pretty stable in the size of our membership.
Great, thanks. And and part of the reasoning I was asking these questions was gonna be regarding parking and and on the site, which I know is not what you're here for, but just with the increase in the building size and and hearing that the that the club is, you know, needing more space, I just was curious as to if there was an increase in demand.
No, no, ma'am.
Okay. Other members of the board have questions for Mr. Costantini?
I I just have one question. Mr. Costantini, uh, is the where, where are the outside staff people currently located, strike that, where were the outside staff people located before the building burned down?
In the old building, there was a small, uh, I wanna say closet-sized room, maybe four by four or four by five, that was large enough to have a counter, a counter space, a, a barstool-sized chair and and room for a computer and a telephone. Uh, the outside staff, outside operations staff on any given day could be as many as seven to eight individuals, and only two individuals were able to fit in that old space.
Hey, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Costantini.
Thank you.
They asked that the testimony of Robert Lines be given in this matter, and that he be admitted to the platform for that purpose.
Hey, Mr. Lines, just, if you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not by the truth? Well, cannot hear you. No.
Who did, Robert?
I don't see him either. Who is it?
Yeah, he's here, Bob Lines. He's here. We just can't hear him.
On my second tab.
Make sure you have your computer already on.
Yeah.
Not yet. Um, I'm gonna call.
Okay. If needed, he could call in from a separate phone. Perhaps.
Bob?
Yes.
Are you on?
Yes, I am.
You, you must be muted.
Yeah.
No.
Was unmuted.
We're not getting any visual or verbal-
We, no, we can see him. We just cannot hear him.
Right.
Can, can he see us and hear us?
Can, can you see and hear us, Bob?
Yes, I can.
All right.
Well, you're muted now, for sure.
He's now muted.
If you unmute, yeah.
So this is my cellphone, I'm getting feedback.
Yeah, we're hearing, we're hearing you only through Mr. Sheehan's cellphone.
Um, Mr. Lines, I don't know if you can check the settings in your Zoom, if maybe you have it set the audios and the speakers, if you go into your Zoom setting on, on the main, it's not on this screen, but if on, if you have the Zoom application, I don't know if you have the Zoom.
I do not have a Zoom application.
You do not?
Could you give me a ring at 973? 912-3449. That's a, pick up my handset, you'll get the feedback.
What's the number, Bob?
Uh, 973?
Yeah.
912-
Yeah.
2449.
All right. Bear with me, Madam Chair, please.
Well, I understand it. Yeah.
Every meeting in COVID time has its own unique challenges. All right, Bob, I've called you. Now, what, what is it that you would like me to do?
Well, can everyone now hear me?
Madam Chair, can you hear?
Very softly, um-
We're hearing him through your cellphone, Mr. Shan.
If I turn off my cellphone, let's see if he, you can hear him then, all right?
No, Bart, Bart, that won't work. We're only hearing him through your cellphone. So maybe if you could put your cellphone closer to your computer speaker.
Yeah.
Or, or, or could Mr. Lines call into the number? We can give him the call-in number.
Yes, to the Zoom call.
And he can then call in directly. We could see him on video, and he can use his phone for audio. Eileen, I, I don't happen to have the-
I have that number available. I have that number available.
Mr. Lyons, Mr. or Mr. Sheehan, Ms. Zoll will give you a phone number. And if you call into that phone number, you will then have your audio through your phone directly into this Zoom call and your video will stay as it is. So if you could hang up, Mr. Lyons. And Beth, can you give Mr. Sheehan the number or?
Yeah, well, Mr. Lyons, you can hear me, right? You can hear me. You're just okay. So can you write down this number to dial in? Are you ready? Or you could just type in however you want to do it. It's three one two six two six six seven nine nine. And then let me give you the the pass, the code for once. Once you get in, it's going to ask you for your passcode. There's there's two things. There's an ID and a passcode. So the ID is nine two nine two one eight six three three four three. And then let me just give you the six digit passcode in case they also ask for that. Passcode is five oh one nine nine one.
So the ID code is nine two nine two one eight six three three four three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the password is five oh one nine nine one.
All right, now I'm gonna hang up, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Mr. Sheehan, I just want to make you aware, we have, we typically call the meeting at 10:30 PM just because I think that's for sanity's sake. So we are happy to, I think we still can get some good information out of Mr. Lyons, once he's able to join us audio, but I just want to give you that heads up. So if we get to that point in the evening and we're not through with the application, we will then carry it to a later date.
Well, we're going to make every effort to get through it.
Okay. So if we see another attendee join, hopefully Mr. Lyons is going to pop in and he would be in the attendee mode, but I haven't seen anybody else come in just yet.
While we're waiting for him, maybe we could take the architect.
Okay, great.
All right, Mr. Jax?
Yeah, Mr. Jax, just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give him tonight's zoom hearings to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Name is Wayne Jax. Last name is spelled J A C Q U E S. And I live at forty-three Fieldstone Circle in Middleboro, Massachusetts.
Mr. Mr. Jax, are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am for 20 years.
And have you in fact testified with respect to the Canoe Brook applications before Milburn Township as an architect when their master plan was presented?
Yes.
And is your license currently effective?
Yes.
Why don't you describe the interior program?
And we will accept Mr. Jax as an architect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Jax, would you describe the program of the interior building and indicate whether or not it is consistent with golf facilities in the custom and vogue of 2020?
Yes, it is. I'd like to pull up the floor plan to show it.
Right. Can you share your screen?
Yeah, yeah.
This is.
Okay, so.
We'll mark this A2 for the record, and this is the floor plan for the first floor, Mr. Jax?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's only one floor, correct, Mr. Jax?
Correct. There's an attic. There's an attic.
But that's just the story.
Correct.
Take us through it, please.
Okay, the the largest portion of the plan, which is this block here, is for bag storage. It's a mobile rack system that that supports the bags required by the by the club. This section on the left front here is the caddy room, which has restrooms for the caddies and a break area. On the backside, pacing on golf course, there's two restrooms for the golfers to use as they're as they're going going through the turn. And then, as Mr. Costantini said, this is the outside operations, which is a narrow space that is available for the outside operations peoples for there's a couple of workstations here, desks and some small cubes for storage.
And again, is this a customary layout for a bag storage and starters facility in golf clubs?
Yes, yes, with with caddies.
How long have you been designing golf club facilities?
Twenty years.
Right. Can you describe the exterior architectural program?
And they're shown in the. They're shown in the earlier rendering, the the shape, the design of the building, the materials, all mirror what was done and approved on the clubhouse a number of years ago. So the building is in keeping with all the materials and forms of the clubhouse and the rest of the campus.
And does the building conform with all applicable dimensional regulations under the Milburn Township ordinance?
Yes, the the ridge line of the building is is thirty thirty feet from the floor level, twenty-nine feet ten, actually.
All right, Mr. Madam Chair, I have no further questions of this witness and would submit him to an examination of the board.
Do any members of the board have questions for Mr. Jax? Mr. Mattel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Out of curiosity, do you have a fire sprinkle system or any kind of material that's fire retardant?
Yes, it's it's fully sprinkled at this time.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jax.
All right, Madam Chair, do we have Mr. Lyons in a position where he can inform?
He's shaking his head. No, Mr. Lyons, you're not. That number was not working for you, I'm guessing. You could do thumbs up, thumbs down. Okay, were you able to? Was did the number connect you to anything? Yes, just you entered the passcode and it was not working?
He he should be able to.
I use the information that's on our website. Uh, he's he's, okay, you're showing us your phone. It's like charades. Do we want to call Mr. Sheehan back? You want to call Mr. Sheehan? Do you want to call him back so we can?
Yeah, I'll dial him up and and put my phone together and maybe we can achieve this quickly.
Great.
Hello, Bob? Now, I'm just barely hearing you. You've got to figure out a way to speak up so that so that I can put my phone next to the screen. They can see you, but they can't hear you. They're hearing you through my phone. So keep your voice up, please. All right, Madam Chair, is this working?
I think so.
Say something, Bob. What is your what is your name, please?
Robert J. Lyons. It's L Y N E S.
Okay, before you begin, we're going to have Mr. Lyons sworn in.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyons, just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give him tonight's zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
I state your name for the record, please.
Robert J. Lyons, L Y N E S.
Thank you.
Great. Mr. Lyons, are you a licensed engineer, civil engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
How long? How long have you been practicing?
I've been in the engineering profession for forty-three years. I've had my license since nineteen eighty-two.
Right. Have you testified before, under oath?
Yes, I have.
Give us three boards.
Um. I I took church town, which is in Pennsville, Westfield. And then the other ones get very old.
All right, Madam Chair, I would submit him to a voir dire or to qualified as an expert in the field of civil engineering.
Great. Mr. Lyons, is your your license is current in New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Yes, we will hear him as such.
Thank you. I'm going to ask if Mr. Lyons or Mr. Jax can share the screen with the civil engineering plan S3 filed in connection with this matter? Five of eight.
Yes, I can do that, I think.
All right, if you would, please.
And so this will be exhibit A.
Three.
Three, thank you.
All right, Mr. Lyons, please use this drawing to describe existing conditions and proposed conditions indicating whether or not the facility proposed is merely a replacement facility with an additional seven hundred and twelve square feet that is plugged in for all utility service to existing conditions.
I'm actually on sheet four. Let me flip to five. I apologize. Okay, this is sheet five, which is the proposed development. I'm gonna use my cursor. This is the old building footprint. The new building footprint is was described really slightly larger. We have a line drawing around the limit of disturbance. As we start at this point, this is asphalt and we have curving that will be removed. This is asphalt once again with curvings that will be removed. And that continues down into this area. In this area, we will be removing brick pavers that will be reinstated at the final. The foundations slab will also be removed for when the building is installed.
Is it fair? Is it fair to say that the existing footprint of the building that was destroyed by fire is two thousand six hundred and ninety-four square feet?
Correct.
And the new proposed building will be a size of three thousand four hundred and fifteen square feet?
Correct.
The differential being seven hundred and twenty-one square feet?
Correct.
Can you briefly point that out on the drawing that is on the board where the additional square footage is with your cursor?
There is some additional here. And then some in right in here.
So you're pointing to the west and the the south side, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, can you indicate for the board the distance from the proposed improvement to the property line of the nearest neighbor?
The nearest neighbor is on Timber Road, Acres Road. And it's about five hundred and fifty-five feet to the property line.
And how about to the how about to the?
To the house.
I'm sorry, please say that again to the house.
About six hundred and seventy to the house.
Right now, can you indicate for the board how the drainage and utilities are managed at the proposed site?
Okay, partly, there's a storm drain system and catch basins. There's one here here, which is about midway at the building. And it drains down towards the parking lot where there's another basin outside of the old back house. And then it goes in a twelve inch pipe to another catch basin in the parking lot.
So you're picking up all of the additional lot coverage that is created by the new proposal, correct?
It's the same lot coverage as existing. There's no net gain of impervious surface, so the runoff should be the same.
Right, Madam Chair, I have no further questions of this witness.
Thank you. Are you able to stop sharing the screen?
Yes.
Do any members of the board have questions for this witness, Mr. Lyons?
I'm trying to stop sharing. I can't find the buttons.
It's okay. I can see everybody. Um. Great. And I apologize, I was remiss. I have not asked if members of the public had any questions for the previous witnesses. So at this time, and I apologize, I would allow anybody who is a member of the public, if they would like to raise their hand and ask questions of any of the three witnesses we've had tonight, Mr. Costantini, Mr. Lyons, and Mr. Jax, now would be the time to use the Zoom, the raise hand function, and we would bring you in if you had any questions. Okay, not seeing any. And again, I apologize for my belated request on that. Um, anybody else on the planning board have questions for Mr. Lyons? Okay. Not seeing any. Mr. Sheehan, that was your third witness?
The third and final witness, Madam Chair, I would submit to the Chair and the Board that the application is, as I pointed out at the beginning, non-controversial and not complex. It's a minor site plan, preliminary and final, with no variances, and I would move its favorable consideration at this time.
Thank you. And I would, can I request that you hang up your line with Mr. Lyons for the moment as we're getting the feedback? Thank you. Thank you also for making that work. Before we move to the board discussion, I want to open it up for any members of the public who wanted to provide any testimony on this application, not necessarily asking questions, but if they had any testimony. Okay, not seeing any. Thank you. Okay, any members of the board have any comments or thoughts regarding the rebuild and increase of the clubhouse following last year's fire? Sanjeev?
Nice golf club. That's the only comment I have.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody like to make a motion on this application?
Motion.
Are you moving to approve this application?
Motion to approve, yes.
A second.
The conditions, by the way, would be the compliance with the professional reports, including the fire marshals report, the engineers report, and other reports that we have, maybe one more where there were comments made.
Okay, and.
And the usual conditions.
I apologize. I know this is a little bit late and we had, I I see a member of the public does have somebody's hand raised. I will allow Carol Nussbaum to come in. Hi there, Ms. Nussbaum, you had your hand raised?
I need to see her.
Yep, if you unmute and if you can turn your camera on, then that would be great. Unless you didn't intend to raise your hand and come. Unless you didn't intend to raise your hand and come in, then that's okay, too.
Unmute and.
Go.
Am I on?
You are not Carol Nussbaum, I'm guessing, but good evening.
Nope, she's allowed me to speak.
Are you providing testimony?
No, I just wanted to provide a comment.
Okay, can, can, but because you're not asking a question, can we have you actually sworn in for your comment?
Raise your right hand. Do you swear from testimony about to give him tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address for the record.
Steven Nussbaum, one twenty-five Tennyson Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you for.
I just wanted to say that, not that it matters, but I was born and raised in this town. Lived here pretty much my whole life, other than college. Lived in the poet's section for over thirty years. And I find this neighbor to be a phenomenal neighbor and what they're doing, God bless anybody who's doing improvements to commercial property these days. And I hope you give them your approval and your blessings.
Thank you, Mr. Nussbaum. And I just want to say for the record, you matter.
Thank you. And thank you for your help.
Okay, thank you for your comment tonight.
Oh, one other.
Yes, go ahead.
I do get a lot of golf balls in my backyard, and I'm not sure what hole that is, but I was wondering if you would, if we could request that a sign be put up on saying, I'm not a golfer, but a lot of my friends like Pro V one golf balls at that hole, so just to make sure that I get Pro V one or similar quality. Outside of that, again, I bless this thing and hope they get everything they want. And I was a class clown of my class at Milburn High, in case you haven't figured that one out.
Can imagine. Thank you, Mr. Nussbaum.
My pleasure.
Okay. We all need a little comic relief, I think. Anybody else have any concluding? So I think at this point, we did have a motion. And we did have a second, I guess, Don, to approve it with the conditions that Mr. Buzak was just sharing with us. Ready? Daniel Baer?
Yes.
Gason Halbert?
Yes.
Jorge Astro Pietro?
Yes.
Mark Mattel?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Sanjeev Benayak?
Yes.
David Morrow?
Yes.
Miriam Salerno?
Yes.
That's all. Yes. Application, I lost its number. I think it's.
Twenty-one oh one.
Oh, one. Was approved for preliminary and final site plan approval. It is ten twenty-four. We made it, guys.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan.
We appreciate you.
Do we have, do we have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Don't move.
Second. Good night. Okay, good night, good night. All in favor, think aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.
Good night, all. Thank you. Okay.